Good morning and welcome to the November 4th, 2013 meeting of the Cumberland County Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice Chair Jeanette Council for the invocation and introduction.
Good morning. Today we have joining us Dr. Charlene Allen, who is the pastor of the Truth and Deliverance One Accord Worldwide Church of God. I had the opportunity to meet with her and to discuss a lot of things with her a few months ago and to visit her place of worship. I was very, very impressed. In fact, I was so impressed that I thought she was the Associate Minister all that time because I was sure that with an organization like that, it had to be, let's say, an experienced gentleman. But she is joining us today and would you stand please for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Good morning.
Morning.
I invite you all to turn your hearts with me as we pray. Loving and gracious God, we are indeed the giver of all good gifts and we come together this day to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and your strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions that are made for the good of all of those who have placed their trust and confidence in this leadership. Give us insight to lead with integrity that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Keep us from shortsightedness. Help us to make decisions that strive to be for the good of all and guard us from blind self-interest. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and say. All glory be to you, loving God, now and forever. Amen.
Join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Allen. Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Dr. Allen, for those words. Next item on our agenda is some recognition of retired county employees and at this time I'd like to call on Commissioner Kenneth Edge.
Good morning, everybody. It's an honor and a privilege for me, on behalf of the board, to recognize some people this morning from our mental health department that have decided to retire. We have, the first one we're going to recognize is Nay Headley. Nay has worked with the county since 1985 and retired July 1st, 2013. We thank you for your service to the citizens of Cumberland County and wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
William H. Robinson. All right. In recognition of outstanding services to the citizens of Cumberland County. He also started in 1985 and retired July 1st, 2013. We congratulate you and wish you well in your retirement and whatever your endeavors you choose to pursue. The next person to be recognized is Charles Danny Southard. He started a little before you other, the other two. He started in September of 1985. So, and he retired July 1st of this year also. We thank you for your outstanding services to the citizens of Cumberland County and wish you well too in your retirement.
You people are the things that make our county great and we appreciate the dedication. I was counting up in 28 years and we really appreciate everything that you have done. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Charles Evans for another special recognition.
Mr. Robert Bob Goodrich. Cumberland County Tax Administration, I would be the one doing the taxes, wouldn't I? And recognition of outstanding service to the citizens of Cumberland County from March 1, 1984 through June 1st, 2013. We, the board, are very pleased and honored to present this to you and thank you for everything that you have done for the citizens of Cumberland County. I know that you're happy. January is coming soon and you'll be calm. But thank you so much, sir.
We have a small change in our agenda, but it's a good thing and after all this recognition, now is an opportunity for an introduction. So I'll call on the county manager, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm pleased this morning to introduce to you Eric Redrick. He's coming to the county. This is actually his first day. Come right over here, Red. Eric, this is his first day of employment as the new Veteran Service Director. He comes to the county from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Division of Workforce Solutions in Robinson County, where he has served three years as a Veterans Employment Consultant. Prior to that, he worked five years here in Fayetteville with the Fayetteville Employment Security Commission and served as the Disabled Veteran Outreach Specialist. We are pleased to have him in the Veteran Service position. He is originally from Hamlet, North Carolina, and he served 22 years in the U.S. Army. His last assignment was with Special Forces Command. He holds a Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration from Campbell University and a Master's Degree in Human Services Development, Management, and Leadership from Webster University. I'm pleased to introduce Eric Redrick. Please welcome him.
Thank you, Eric. Would you like to say a few words, Eric? You can stay behind the podium if you will. We have people watching on TV that are ready to hear you.
I just first want to thank Mr. Martin for bringing in board and staff. It's a pleasure to be returning back to Cumberland County. I've been working outside of the county for the last three years, servicing four other districts, and it's a pleasure to be back servicing the veterans here in Cumberland County.
Hey, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me saying, Mr. Red, excellent choice. This young man has worked throughout the community other than what he was doing with the Employment Security Commission, and he worked very well with ex-offenders and helped Project Fresh start out a great deal. And so, I'm very pleased to see you here with the county, back home. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. And this time, before we get to approval of the agenda, I would like to remind everyone of a couple of things that is coming up. Obviously tomorrow, for many of our municipalities, they're having local elections, so I encourage everyone to get out and exercise your right to vote. In addition to that, in addition to that, we also have Veterans Day coming up. We have some members of our board that are veterans and also we have a number of members that are staffed, so I think it's appropriate Eric comes on board a week before Veterans Day. Pleased to have him there. So, in the next week and every day, thank a veteran when you can. This time I'll call on, first item of business is the approval of the agenda.
Off motion approved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those. Stand by, county manager.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to ask you to, under item seven, we have a closed session. If needed, I would like to ask you to have a quick closed session for an economic development update.
Okay. Are you emphasizing the quick, Mr. Martin?
Quick, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the agenda as recommended by the manager.
Okay. And motions are made and seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay, item number two is the consent agenda.
Off motion approved.
All right, Mr. King, thank you very much.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay. Okay, our next item on the agenda is a public hearing and I'd like to bring, well, Mr. Manager, would you like to take this and make the introductions for this?
Yes, this is a public hearing on the annual Community Transportation Grant Program. Christine Wagner is here to give you a briefing about what it's about and I'm not, I think we may not have any speakers. We do not have speakers, but let her tell you what it's about.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is for our annual Community Transportation Grant for fiscal year 2015. This helps cover some of our administrative costs associated with the program such as salaries, marketing, office supplies, things like that. So this comes from DOT and helps assist us with those costs. The total amount we're applying for is $79,535 with the required local match of $11,931.
Okay. Thank you, Christine. This time I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, is there a question or a motion?
Oh, I have a motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Vice Chair.
I know that we approved the 2015 application and the resolution for the Community Transportation Program.
And there's a second. Questions, I'll ask you to vote, all those in favor.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much, Christine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, item number four, items of business. Call on Ms. Sally Shutt for an update on the 2013-2014 Strategic Plan. Ms. Sally Shutt, Public Information Officer. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to update you on some of the achievements in the 2013-14 Strategic Plan. In your agenda packet, you have a more detailed information, so I'm just going to hit some of the high points for each of the five goals. The first goal, ensuring a safe and healthy community. The detention center expansion is nearing completion. The county has contracted with Cape Fear Valley Health System to provide outpatient mental health services to children, adolescents, and adults through the Community Mental Health Center at Cape Fear Valley, which is now located at 109 Bradford Avenue. The center will be moving to Roxy Avenue and the hospital will also operate a crisis assessment center there. Emergency Services has hired a consultant to study the Viper P-25 console upgrade for the 911 communications center. Now, this upgrade is required to be in place by early 2014. Emergency Services has also hired an emergency management planner and the jail health program received accreditation in May and in June, the Health Department received accreditation and that is through 2017. On January 1, 15, of our county properties will go smoke-free. The Health Department Director will be presenting a plan for Phase Two at this week's Policy Committee meeting. And back in June, you approved revisions to the animal control ordinance. For fiscal year 2013, animal control has reported that adoptions are up 15% and euthanasia rate is down 9%. In the preparation for the expanded use of the state's NCFAST system, the Department of Social Services implemented work support strategies. That's the service model, service delivery model, and that allows citizens to tell their story once in order to receive the services for which they're eligible. And many of our departments have a wide range of programs promoting health and safety. One I will point out in the area of youth development, that was a specific action step that was requested. Cooperative Extension held the county's first youth citizens academy this summer. Goal two, providing adequate infrastructure. Engineering and infrastructure asked all department heads to complete a space utilization study to assist in the development of a capital improvement plan, and those survey results were due October 30th. Veteran Services moved into their new location at the former Board of Elections and then DSS outfitted the space that was previously occupied by Veteran Services and converted that into a call center. Child Support is expanding into additional space at 109 Bradford Avenue and the Safe Link Office has expanded here at the courthouse and the Register of Deeds Office is undergoing renovations. Information Services has completed Phase One of the three-phased telecommunications plan that we're currently implementing Phase Two.
Can I just, for a second, that DSS-created call center, say a word about that just a little bit about that.
The call center there, they actually, to handle the volume of calls coming in, the universal worker program like was described in work support strategies where one, you can tell your story once and then they will assist you in applying for the benefits. And I believe the center is one of the ones that has received an award recently from the Social Services Institute. We'll be getting out a press release about that.
May I just add a comment? I think previously, calls have come into the area of specialty within DSS, be it whatever that area may be. What we're trying to move to now is one central call center with workers being familiar with all of the DSS programs and able to take an application and advise people on what they need. So it's, I think it's sort of a consolidation of calls that were coming to the various agencies and divisions within DSS and now trying to get them into one central center.
They call it a universal worker concept where the workers are cross-trained in all the areas. Goal three is promoting economic development. Cooperative Extension has hired a consultant for the farmers market feasibility study that is scheduled to be completed by February. A contractor has been hired to install the sewer line for the Vander Sewer Project. As you're well aware, the Crown Center is now under private management with Global Spectrum. And then, there are ongoing programs through child support, the library, and other departments to assist job seekers. Goal four, educating, informing, and engaging our citizens. Just last week, 25 people graduated from our Fall Citizens Academy. From three sessions that we've held, we have a total of 85 people who have completed the program and our next session will run March 18th through April 29th. We held our first Appointed Boards Welcome and Information Session in August and we have another one scheduled on January 14th. That will be for new appointees and for any of those existing board members who were unable to attend our first one. We've also started a partnership with Fayetteville Cumberland Educational TV. We started that in July and now your Board of Commissioners meetings air live and they'll rebroadcast the next day on Tuesday on Channel Five. We've also added a new monthly show to our programming lineup, so now we have two monthly programs, Cumberland Matters and Cumberland Conversations. We have contracted with a company to livestream our meetings and that company is onsite today working on implementation of that. The library created a wonderful resource webpage for the Affordable Care Act and they also held information sessions throughout October at their various branches. The Department of Social Services has also started regular meetings with the community partners and they've offered office space for certified counselors from Stedman Wade Clinic and for navigators from Legal Aid of North Carolina so that those resources are there onsite at DSS to assist citizens coming in with questions about the Affordable Care Act. And then again, many of our departments are out there holding outreach events and programs and putting out resource guides. For example, animal control is holding regular adoption events and a group of volunteers, which is spearheaded by one of their animal control board members, has started a Facebook page to promote adoptions. The Health Department participated in many events as well as the library. And then the final goal, employing motivated, professional, and well-trained personnel. Phase Two of the Salary Compensation Plan, the Position Classification Plan, and Salary Schedule all went into effect in September. Updated HR policies are in draft form and there's an implementation date anticipated by January. We've completed the first full work cycle of the Performance Management System and HR is conducting an audit of those evaluation results. And then just here, a few weeks ago, on October 15th, HR implemented a new online job application system. It's operated by NeoGov. And this new software replaces the county's former online system. We've had one for two years. And I think it's important to note that last year, HR received more than 8,000 applications. That's not including the applications for the Department of Social Services or the Sheriff's Office. So that completes my update on the five goals and again, there's additional information in the report in your packet. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner, any questions or comments on our strategic plan?
Just that, there's some excellent programs in here and I was excited about them when I read about them. Some of them I didn't know about. Unfortunately, we can't know about everything, so this is, this is good information. I was impressed by some of the, just the variety of events and the variety of activities conducted by so many of the departments.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I think it's important that we as a board recognize, Mr. Edge, it was about three or four years ago, that we initially started.
2011.
2011, we initially started. We talk sometimes about a living, breathing document, but it has changed in itself, but we've taken off a lot of things that were our goals, but our core goals have remained the same. And I got to tell you, I'm really proud of the staff and the commissioners for supporting this because when you see it up there, realize we've got a lot, we've done a lot. We really have. So, Ms. Shutt, thank you very much. Mr. Martin.
Mr. Keith, just one comment if I may. There are some fantastic programs on the area and some great things being done and I'll echo everything that you said, but there's still more to be done.
Absolutely.
And one of the things that Commissioner Council and I had the opportunity to attend the Board of Directors Meeting in New Bern this past weekend and they handed out some booklets that show some statistical information about Cumberland County. And I think it'd be interesting for all of you to either look at that or maybe we get copies for everybody and Sally, definitely for you and share that with the departments because quite frankly, some of the areas, particularly around the safe communities and the economic development issues relate to us and if you look where we are, it's somewhat embarrassing. I'm going to be quite frank with you, it is. So we've got, we've got still room for improvement and so I just wanted to share that with the board and with Sally and I think it's something that we all need to look at. I don't know, Mr. Martin, has your office got a copy of that yet?
I don't think so. I don't.
Yeah, I think it was just hauled off the press. But Jeanette and I both have a copy of that and be glad to share it with you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Edge. I'm sure that all the commissioners believe that there's more work to be done and more work, very diligently to do that.
There was one other item, Mr. Edge, that came up from an initiative that started in Cumberland County. I'm not going to say Commissioner Evans did it, but he brought it up and that Van the Box that is going, now, it looks like it may be going statewide. And I think it came up from your committee that you are a member from the state and that was mentioned in our, in our meeting. Just wanted to make notes.
Okay.
Not to punctuate.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ms. Shutt, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is item number five, which is nominations, boards, and commissions. The first is the Cumberland County Finance Corporation, Cumberland County Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority. There are three vacancies.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair.
I have, I think this is the one that I have looked at and looked at. Can we refer this committee if there are no nominations? I'm looking at the present makeup and the, and the vacancies, am I looking at the right one?
Yeah.
To the Finance Committee unless somebody has some nominees today?
I think that'd be appropriate. Is there a possibility that we can bring that up? Is there a possibility that we can bring that up under other items of interest, Mr. Committee Chair?
I don't know if it's appropriate for the Finance Committee, but certainly one committee.
Well, I.
Finance or Policy, they're both meeting, right? I think Council Policy.
I don't know who's in charge of this committee, but are making recommendations to us, and I know it's ultimately our responsible, our responsibility, but I think it's definitely important that we have a, some really good people on there that understand the financing information, because even though we're not issuing any bonds at the present time, we need some people that understand the finance structure when we ever do issue any bonds again. So, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe this way.
So I think it's important to, to, either we make some recommendations or, and, or we get whoever's in charge of this to make them back to us.
Commissioner, I address Commissioner Edge's comments. My office actually keeps in mind for this, these bodies, they have not met.
They haven't met.
Except they met one time in 2010, and it was for a meeting that, for something that didn't happen, and they have not met since then. And that's the reason that you're not getting any.
What is the requirement of having this committee?
It meets as called, and it is, as Commissioner Edge said, certain financings that the county may do, and then the Industrial Sales and Pollution Control Financing Authority, it's the same, they're two different bodies, but it's the same group of people. The federal law has changed, and it's not likely that we will see that type of bond issuance anymore anyway, the second phase of it.
Okay, Commissioner, careful.
Mr. Chairman, if you're going, if the Board's going to refer this to the Finance Committee, I would ask that staff bring us all the information about this committee, when they should meet, what they're supposed to do. It might be that we can just do away with this committee unless it's a required committee, and just have a committee of the board take over the duties, but I mean, that, the Finance Committee can discuss that Thursday, but with all the appropriate information.
There's been a request, I don't think we need to put this into term of a motion, there's been a request from the Vice Chair to have this particular committee nominations and background information go before the Finance Committee. There's no need for a motion. Mr. Martin, can we make sure that happens?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Fantastic. Next item is the Tourism Development Authority. And is there any nominations for the Tourism Development Authority?
Mr. Melvin.
Mr. Melvin.
Daniel Roberts, Billy Williams, and Tandem Vivek.
Okay, there are three vacancies and three nominations. Are there any more nominations?
Just a question, Mr. Melvin, that is, for the one-year appointments that they're requesting, or those two.
Yes.
Did you?
Yes, Mr. Evans.
Yes, I have a nomination.
Okay.
Ms. Barbara Spike.
Okay, and which representative would she be? Does she have a hotel over, under?
No, she doesn't.
Okay.
Okay. I will try.
All right, cool. Cool.
What's in the air?
All right. Thank you. All right, are there any more nominations? If not, I'll move the nominations to be closed.
Second.
Okay. Okay, item number six, appointments to boards and committees.
To the, oh, to the Cumberland County Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, Deborah Atkinson, Annie Hassan, and Mary Bremer. To the Local Emergency Planning Committee, Greg Phillips. To the Farm Advisory Board, Kevin West, Clifton McNeil, and David Gillis. Fayetteville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau, Manish Mehta. And Joint Appearance Commission, Matthew McLean. Minimum Housing Appeals Board, Linda Amos. That's my motion. I have a second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go into a closed session for an Economic Development Matter under general statutes.
143, 116.
With some parentheses, okay.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. Come back out of closed session. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Move it, Mr. Chairman?
Second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.